Well, good afternoon. Welcome, everybody, to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oakland City Planning Commission for Thursday, June the 9th, 2022. I'd like to welcome, everybody. Before we get started, just a couple of announcements. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent, just so they don't interrupt the meeting. If you're here to be heard on a case today and you haven't yet seen these or been told, there are these little white sheets of paper out front on the table out there. If you'll fill them out and hand them to staff, they'll make sure that I get it. At the appropriate time, I'll call on you. You come into the microphone, and when you get here, be sure and start out by giving us your name and address for the record, and then tell us anything you want us to know about the case. We give speakers five minutes, and we do reserve the right to limit comments if they're redundant, or not within the scope of our hearing, or something to that effect. But with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So, our first order of business is to receive the minutes from the May 26, 2022, meeting. And unless there's discussion on that from commissioners, I'd take a motion to receive those minutes if someone would like to make it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive the minutes from the May 26, 2022, meeting.
Okay. I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. That's okay. Commissioner La Forge has voted aye. And those minutes are received. Next item on the agenda today are our continuance requests. We have one, I believe, that was published. Mr. Butler, you want to read that one?
Yes, item 27 is an uncontested request, and this is case number PC 10811, requested defer to June 23rd.
Was there anybody who wanted to be heard on that case today? Okay. There's no discussion from commissioners on that. I'll take a motion. The continuance is read.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the continuance as read.
Okay. I have a motion. Maybe. There we go. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And that continuance is approved. Next item on our agenda are new continuance requests, and we do have a number of those. One that was a late request. So, Mr. Butler, if you want to read those for us, please.
Yes, item 10 is SP 563. It's been withdrawn. Item 15, KC 7446, defer to June 23rd. Item 22, SPOD 1408, defer to June 23rd. Item 25, case SP 557, defer to July 14th. And item 26, case PUD 1891, defer to June 23rd.
Okay. Is there anybody that wanted to be heard on any of those items today? Yes, sir? Do you have an objection to the continuance, or do you want to be heard on it?
No, I have no objection.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then we'll just kind of move. Any commissioner or comments from commissioners on that, on any of those items? Okay. If not, I'll take a motion on those continuances as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the continuances as read.
Okay.
Can you repeat one more time what they are?
Yes, ma'am. It's item 10 on today's agenda, SP 563. Item 15, which is KC 7446. Item 22, SPOD 1408. Item 25, which is SP 557. And item 26, which is PUD 1891. Yep. Item 10 was a withdraw, and the rest of the items were continued to June 23rd, except SP 557, which is July 14th. I do have a motion to grant those continuance requests. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. Those continuances are approved. Next item on our agenda today is our consent docket. We have five items on our consent docket today. Mr. Butler, do you want to read those for us?
Yes, the first item is case ED 234, application to dedicate a variable with right-of-way to the public located south of East Reno Avenue and west of First Americans Boulevard. Item two is KC 7441, a final plat of Cottonwood Estates, located east of South County Line Road and south of Southwest 44th Street. Item three is KC 7443, final plat of Nichols Creek, Phase IV, located west of North County Line Road and south of Northwest 122nd Street. Item four is KC 7447, final plat, a replat of blocks 11 and 12 of Highland Point, Phase I, located south of West Memorial Road and east of North May Avenue. And item five is KC 7448, final plat of Sycamore Gardens, Section 5, located east of South Check Hall Road and north of Southwest 15th Street.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on any of those items today? Okay. Seeing nobody, if there's no discussion from commissioners, I would take a motion on the consent docket as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent docket as read.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the items on today's consent docket. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. All votes hopefully are cast. And those items are approved. Next item on the agenda are items, begins items requiring separate vote. Our first item on today's agenda is item six. Mr. Butler, you want to read that for us?
This is case SPOD 1413, application to rezone 1933 Northwest 29th Street from R1.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an SPOD that would essentially allow what has been there for many, many decades to remain. There are two structures that have been on the House for many, many years. In fact, they're even addressed separately, but it's owned R1 single-family, and it's 6,000 square feet. So, it has been non-conforming, and in order to be able to actually sell them and make it conforming from a title perspective, we need to come and rezone it. The only avenue we really have is the SPOD process. So, the SPOD would allow the two structures that are there to remain, and it would alter the minimum lot size, and then allow them ultimately to be split and sold as independent lots. There are no TEs, however, in talking to Commissioner Powers, we do want to add a couple TEs. One, we want to delete all uses other than the single-family residential 8200.14. And then, we need to add a TE to prohibit signage. And finally, I need to add a TE to alter the access language to allow access onto Virginia, as the northern structure takes access onto Virginia. As you can see in the image before you, there's a driveway right there that has existed. So, with those three TEs, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That would allow, you're saying it would permit access to Virginia?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Powers, this is your word, ma'am.
Yes, David, as I'm looking at the staff report under dumpsters, it says, "All existing dumpsters shall be deemed to conform." There aren't any dumpsters on the site.
No, this will be standard, big blue Oakland City trash.
I have absolutely no problem with this at all, but if there's somebody here who wants to speak on it, I'd love to hear from them.
Okay. I do not have anybody signed up to speak, but I'll ask the question. Is there anybody who wants to be heard today on SPOD 1413?
Yeah. If not, I will move approval with the addition of maybe four TEs now, since there are no dumpsters. One, no signage. One, removing all of the non-purely R1 single-family residential use units. One, allowing access to Virginia for the residential structure that faces Virginia.
Okay. TE3?
TE3. And then, if we need four for the dumpster, great.
Okay. Mr. Box, you want to add something like, "No dumpsters shall be prohibited unless during construction," or something like that?
Sure.
I mean, just, okay. Okay. So, I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPD 1413, subject to the technical evaluations that were read into the record by Mr. Box initially, and then confirmed by Commissioner Powers. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. Who? Me. I voted. I vote yea. Don't hit the ejection button on me just yet.
Thank you.
And that item is recommended for approval. Next item on our agenda today is item number seven.
This is SPOD 1415, application to rezone 1616 North May Avenue from C3 and R2.
All right. Alec Bass, Wallace Design, 410 North Walnut, representing the applicant today. This application is, the existing site is a Jimmy Zeg Diner. They are proposing to demolish and build a new diner back in its place. Once we got into the design efforts, we realized that the east 50 feet of this property is currently zoned R2. That is currently paved and being used as a parking lot. So, with this application, we're looking to bring the site into compliance to function as a restaurant like it does today, with the exceptions that are written into the SPUD document. As far as we are going to, right now, they have parking directly off of May Avenue, so we're having to push the building back to allow room for parking in front of the building, and we're going to curb along May. We've written in setback requirements along the east property to be sensitive to the residential neighbors in the back. We're not going to have any drive-through speakers or anything in the future, so happy to answer any questions you may have.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Govine, this is your word, sir. Do you have questions for the applicant on this?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
On, there was a little bit of, I was a little unclear on whether the fence bordering the residential property immediately behind the parking lot, is that going to remain, or is it tree? It seemed like you, the application notes that we may retain the fence, we may not. We may retain the trees, we may not. I was trying to get a little more clearer picture of what's the plan there.
Absolutely. When we prepare these documents, we have to write them in such a way that they will stand for all time until, you know, if somebody else wants to come in here to a restaurant, then those trees are long dead. Right now, there are trees along the east property line. There is an existing chain link fence over there. We would like to maintain and keep those trees to act as our screening. We did communicate that with staff, and everybody's in favor with trees. They're on the property boundary, so if we were to have a required fence, it could put some of those trees in jeopardy for where we'd have to put those posts. So, staff agreed if we write in that if we retain the trees, we're not required to build the fence, but if any of those trees are removed now or in the future, then the fence becomes required.
Okay. So, the preference is definitely to keep the trees first?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yep.
I have no further questions on this application.
All right. Let me ask, Commissioner Powers?
I was going to say, just to be clear, if the site-proof screening provided by the trees goes away, the chain link fence will not be sufficient site-proof screening. It will have to be replaced with something that's actually site-proof.
Correct. The way it is written, the code will require that if those trees are not their site-proof screening, it is required.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anybody who wants to be heard today on SPOD 1415? Okay. If I don't see anybody, I don't see anybody, so if there's no further comments from commissioners, Commissioner Govine, if you'd like to make a motion, I think we're ready to receive it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve SPUD 1415.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPOD 1415. There are no TEs. It's been seconded by, pause for effect, Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda today is item eight. Mr. Butler?
This is SPOD 1416, application to rezone 2917 North Portland Avenue from C3.
Hi, George Mendros, 5800 North Porter, Norman, Oklahoma. And on this SPOD 1416, this is an existing club that has been there for almost 60 years now. And I'm convinced to my client that, I guess there's a, after 60 days, or 90 days, 60 days, there's a thing that where you have to reapply for a liquor license. So, that's what we're here for.
Okay. Commissioner Powers, this is your word, ma'am. Do you have questions or concerns on this application?
I have, um, the site of the, of the bar is, is longstanding, as he indicated, but it's a mess. I have real concerns about why we're doing this through an SPD instead of as a special permit, which would require greater notice, for instance, from 300 feet out to 600 feet. This is an area that is surrounded on the north and west by residential areas. It has a sort of outdoor patio-ish thing. Its dumpster is out in plain sight. This, this SPOD is just like way too much of a blank check for me to be able to support it. If you would like to take some time and sit down and talk through whether there's a way to get you what you need, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, because, as you said, this has been a bar for a long, long time. But I would really, really prefer that that be done through the standard special permit process, rather than go this SPOD route, which allows you to sort of short-circuit and circumvent a lot of things from the revocation standards and expiration standards. I mean, it's like, if we do this as zoning, then it's there forever. And so, if there's a billboard, you know, and there's, it's just, it's a mess. So, I can't support it today. If you would like to take some time and see if we can get you what you need to move forward, I'm not opposed to that, per se. But, you know, the site's definitely going to require some help. There's zero landscaping on it anywhere. It's just a mess.
Are you agreeable to a continuance to talk it out, or would you, what's your position on that?
I believe our position is that we would like to continue on with, with this. I mean, we worked with zoning and worked out everything that they required and requested, so I don't understand why the site is...
Was it suggested to you that you file for an SPOD? Is that what was suggested to you?
It was explained to me that an SPOD would be sufficient for this, and that's why we didn't change anything drastically. We just basically kept it the way it was, and then changed the things that needed to be changed. So, this is kind of alarming.
Got it. I, I'm at least a little bit curious if the, if there's an agreement from staff that a special permit would typically be the way something like this is handled because of the increased notice requirement there versus the rezoning application. So, Mr. Chambly, do you want to comment on that?
You can get there either way, either with a special permit or an SPOD. I'd have to, I don't remember on this one, and there may be one of the special permit conditions that could be met, but we'll have to look at that and see.
I mean, the one thing I'll at least say for the purposes of kind of having a discussion with fellow commissioners here is that we're going from what is an open C3 application to a one-use, a single use. It's essentially allowing only 8,300.33 drinking establishments.
No, no. It's an additional use. It's all of C3 plus a bar.
That's not the way that I read it. I'm...
Except that the following restrictions shall apply, the following additional uses will be permitted.
Okay. Okay. Not the following uses. Okay. All right. Understood. So, your concern is that this is a chance to create a more compatible use. I mean, the use has been existence for a long, long time, but your, your point is this is a chance for us to make it more compatible and protect the neighborhood?
Correct. I mean, you say it's been existed for a long time. It was a bar for a very long time. Clearly, something's happened to interrupt their ability to keep operating it, so...
Right.
Whether that's just a lapse in its use or what, I'm not aware. I don't have those facts. I don't know. But yes, as I say, I'm not opposed, per se, to the use, but if we're going to do it by SPOD, it's a special permit, we're going to have to have a reason to do that.
Got it.
And, you know, there's going to have to be some actual give and take for an SPOD on the side.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your perspective. Are there, do other commissioners have thoughts or comments on this? They want to share? Either, either the applicant has expressed an interest to move forward, so opinions on the continuance, or opinions on the application that we can give feedback on?
I would just say, for their benefit, I agree with Commissioner Powers.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I, I think I just want to be clear about what, I mean, I get the uses as an issue, but again, it was already zoned C3. We'd only be adding the bar that it's been functioning as. So, I guess, I, I am curious about the issues with there being an outdoor operation to the bar. That's a concern for me. I wondered about the access from that side street. Of course, I cannot remember what it is.
Side street's 29th.
29th. Is that an issue? I didn't know if we had some hours of operations limitations. I mean, clearly, there, it doesn't look, appear to be any form of a buffer.
So, all of the above. You know, right now, there are no limitations at all on its operation. And if we were to adopt this, it would be just a blank check. Here you go. And I, I just can't do that.
I will, I will note, too, that even though our zoning map shows us that the property to the north is C3, it's currently developed as apartments. So, it's really a residential use on commercial zoning. So, you got residential to the west and to the north.
I'm okay with the continuance.
Okay. Any other commissioners feel differently? So, I, I think you're being strongly encouraged. We, we can proceed with a vote. You're the applicant, but I think you're being strongly encouraged to take the continuance. But I think you're being strongly encouraged to take the continuance. I think, at least for me, I can't support it in the current, in its current configuration because of the concerns of the ward representative. So I'm a little torn about how to tell you to go forward. I don't want to tell you how to handle your application, but I don't know that you're going to go forward with a recommendation for approval. So I think your option might be to take two weeks, work with Commissioner Powers, and try to come up with some concessions that would aid the development to the west and to the north, which is residential in nature, and allow you to continue operating. I haven't heard anything from commissioners. I don't want to speak for them, but I'll speak in case they disagree with this, that there's not general support for the idea that because this has been operating for a long time, it certainly makes sense. It's just a matter of trying to create greater compatibility to protect those neighborhoods, and I think that's a reasonable accommodation to make while we have the chance to do it, so.
So the solution would probably be for a continuance then.
So, okay, okay. All right. Well, if that's the case, let me do ask, just out of an abundance of caution, is there anybody else who wanted to be heard on SPD 1416 today? I do not have anybody signed up to speak, but somebody came all the way down here. I want to hear them. Okay. If not, and there's no further discussion from commissioners, I'll take the motion to continue. Commissioner Powers, if you'd like to make it.
I move to continue item number eight, SPD 1416, to our next meeting, which is...
June the 23rd.
23rd.
Okay, I have a motion to continue SPD 1416 to June the 23rd. It's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. An item is recommended for approval. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Are you Mr. Mendros?
I am.
Are you Mr. Mendros?
I am.
And so is this your correct contact information?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda today is item number nine.
This is case PUD 1897, application to rezone 331 North 70th from I1.
Once again, David Box, 522 Callcore Drive. On behalf of the applicant, this is an application that would allow for a par three golf course. Jared, could you just, yeah. So it's currently a tree farm. This would allow, frankly, really pretty limited uses to allow for this, this par three golf course to be developed. It is recommended for approval. There are no technical evaluations. I'm going to have to answer any questions.
Okay, I appreciate that. Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward, sir. Do you have questions or comments on this for the applicant?
Yeah, I love the idea. Could you talk a little bit about the, I'm just looking at this note on page 10 regarding compatibility. The proposed development is requested along a neighborhood slash local street instead of a collective street but can otherwise meet the standards. What is the condition of 70th? Is that a cause for concern at all? I have not been down that street.
I don't know. No. I mean, I'll tell you, my client has spent a bunch of time and effort to look at the site. They didn't have any concerns with it. The purpose of this is to allow for various charities and foundations to use it for youth golf, specifically to kind of introduce the game to children through the par three. So they spent a bunch of time on there. Didn't have any major concerns when they were viewing the site. It's surrounded by kind of field slash I1 uses. So I'm not sure what compatibility issues exist considering there are no TEs.
Just in reference to the street, just in reference to that. Everything else, it seems to me.
Yeah, I guess what I'd say is it wasn't such a concern that it became a TE from staff.
So, no other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Is there anybody who wants to be heard today on PUD 1897?
I was going to look really quick and just see what the other possible uses of the property would be under the use unit side.
Well, it's R1, and then we added the one use for the golf course. We're taking it from I1, so it's a significant reduction.
Is your question, Commissioner Powers, whether or not something else would be allowed under community recreation?
Right. I mean, the, at least the staff report doesn't indicate that it's limited specifically to golf course. I was just wondering what else would be encompassed by that. I see that it includes clubhouses, swim centers, tennis centers, playgrounds, playfields, marinas, boat docks, country clubs, and public parks.
Boat dock seems unlikely here.
Yeah.
With any luck, we'll have marina there fairly soon.
Yeah, I'm going to say there's no boat dock in its future.
Any use that includes outdoor lights shall be included in this use unit. I don't have a problem with any of those, so.
Okay. Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion on this, I didn't have anybody signed up, so if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion, Commissioner Pennington, if you're ready to make it on PUD 1897.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1897 to City Council.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1897. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda, item 10 was continued, or actually, excuse me, it was withdrawn, so item 11.
Item 11 is case number SP 564, application to permit above-ground flammable liquid storage in the I2 moderate industrial district. Location is at 7220 Northwest 63rd Street.
Good afternoon. My name is Shane Lebeth. I'm 3241 Southwest 93rd, and I'm the architect on the project. This is an existing fuel farm. We're basically moving it about 50 feet to the east, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. This is Commissioner Claire's ward. He's not with us today. What I'll just say in his absence is that I reviewed two key components that were important to me. One was fire's comments, if any, and the other was from the Department of Airports. Department of Airports did not provide any comments or objections, and the fire department staff report also contains no objections. So I'll just note that for the record, and I'll ask my fellow commissioners if they have any comments or concerns on SP 564. The conditions for the special permit are otherwise met. I guess I should notate that for the record.
So, just to be clear, this is, this is actually on the airport site.
It is.
And we're just moving it from one place to another.
We are.
Is there anybody here that wants to be heard on SP 564? Okay. Well, if there's no discussion in Commissioner Claire's absence, I'd take a motion from anybody who's willing to make it. There are no TEs.
I'll make a motion to approve the application or recommend for approval.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SP 564. Please cast your votes when available. Or a second would be good. Just kidding. Okay, seconded by Commissioner Powers. Now cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 12.
This is PUD 1898, application to rezone 5305 Northwest 150th Street from PUD 1651.
Good afternoon. Dean Colitas, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4045 Northwest 64th Street, representing the applicant. On this project here, this is a 20-acre master-planned senior living retirement community. The proposed use is going to be gated, single-family homes for sale, amenity center, walking path, pickleball court, putting green, that type of facility. You know, there's going to be some high-end homes here, and I'll let Mr. Hoffman, who is the owner of Spatacular Homes, come up and do his presentation on the type of product there. When it comes to the TEs, we do have to address number two and three on there. So we do have currently, if you show the overall, we have a sidewalk that's on the interior. In this type of community, which he's done several, you know, most of the homeowners, there's not much traffic. It's kind of a retirement community. You know, they're, they're using the streets to walk. You know, it's pretty low, low-volume traffic. We do have a circular sidewalk in the interior, but the way that the product is done, he can kind of, the variant product, I'll let him show his presentation of how it works. The homes are, you know, without a sidewalk on the exterior, it allows them to do a little bit more type of products and have a bit more open space for their individual homes. So there'll still be connectivity to all the amenities, AD accessibility and everything, and so that's kind of what the purpose of just having one sidewalk. So we request to have number two removed if possible. And then on number three, the connectivity, because this is a retirement community, it's kind of tucked in the corner there. There's a creek. It's basically a drainage ditch on the east side, and of course, 150th. So it's kind of tucked in the corner, kind of the exclusive community, private. And so to keep traffic out is what they want. So the stub to the west was, you know, not desirable. We do have an emergency service access to the north. They'll be tying to Echo Park, which is a single-family neighborhood that's going to be coming in the future. And then also because of the grade difference, you know, obviously, the senior living, you need the lots to be fairly flat. So there's quite a bit of fall across this site. So from the far east, we're going to cut in a retaining wall to flatten the lots out there on the, on the west side. Then there's going to, in between the back of the lots, there's going to be another six or eight feet slope, and then the other lots are going to flatten out. So because of the grade difference, the balance of site, it's going to be a barrier to put a road to the west. If not, we have to do retaining walls and some type of ramp road up, which is not desirable. So with that in mind, we're requesting that number two and three be removed as TEs.
But these are, and these are going to be private streets. This is gated.
Gated private streets, yes, sir.
Okay, so your suggestion, and I'll just note real quickly, so this is Ward 8K, so I'm just going to jump in. The sidewalks, TE number two, instead of just striking or deleting the whole TE, you, it looks to me like you intend to install a sidewalk around the outside. So could we just amend it to say sidewalk shall be installed on one side of the private streets?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. And then TE three, you're asking to strike because you have private streets, but you're saying you're going to provide kind of a crash gate type on the north?
On the north side, you can see it up there. There's a, there's a crash gate for emergency services that'll tie in.
Got it, okay. I don't have an objection to either of those because it's private streets and because of the type of development terms of the sidewalk, we do have them. But I'm curious if my other commissioners have concerns there, so.
Sure. And I'll let Mr. Hoffman kind of go through his presentation and kind of give you the idea of why the sidewalks and kind of the product that he's got going.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Brad Hoffman, 2468 West New Orleans Street. I am the developer and builder. We are the only builders in our neighborhoods, and we've developed, I guess, this will be the third development. We have two in Broken Arrow and one in Edmund. They've been very successful. It's a, it's a niche market. We call it luxury downsizing. You can find homes that are smaller, but with the luxury of million-dollar quality is what we're trying to reach. So, so people wanting to lug, to downsize but keep the quality they're used to and, you know, high quality. And I'll show you some examples of that. The neighborhood's, you know, one entry gated, privacy. Security is very important to this client, and that helps provide that. But still give access for emergency vehicles through the crash gate to make it safe also from a fire and ambulance standpoint. The sidewalks on, on one side of the street, it allows us to get, to vary the setback of the homes on the other side. The setback is based on, we want to make sure we can always get a car in front of the house without blocking a sidewalk. And, and we like to push the homes in and out, so it's not just a row of garages. And when you drive through our neighborhoods, we like a little bit more winding streets, and the houses come in and out. It, it creates just a nicer streetscape. They are low maintenance. Homeowner Association maintains all the lawn care of the homes. There are 77 homes in the neighborhood. If you, go ahead and go punch to the next slide if you don't mind. Your typical home, you, you put on the center of the lot as depicted here, and then you have five feet and then a fence. We, the way we like to do it would be more typical on this next slide where you have the home, we push it to one side of the lot, and then it gives you 10 feet of usable space, and all the, all the homes are, have a brick exterior. On the garage side of the home or on the zero side, they have to be high windows or frosted, so it keeps it private. It is in our covenants to only build one single-story homes, again, for privacy, so you don't have people looking down into that private yard. So they're, they're, they're very efficient. It's a, it's a better use of the space. It allows us to get more windows, more amenities on the lot. Just a smarter way of planning, we feel. It will be a gated entry. We have brick walls across the front, and then around the perimeter of the rest of the development, we use a Trex fencing product, which is a, really a no-maintenance-type fence. It looks good forever, and it holds the value within the area as well. The, again, you can see here, these are homes we've built in our neighborhoods. You can see the, the custom outdoor spaces in a small courtyard-type setting. You can have amazing outdoor rooms in these spaces. Again, outdoor fireplaces, outdoor kitchens. They are all single-story, open floor, floor plans. We love natural light. The exteriors are all masonry to keep them low maintenance. And we use a lot of specialty ceilings, and it's our goal, we do custom homes. All these homes are custom. Every home looks different when you drive through our neighborhoods, which it's almost, it's a magical place because you drive through and you're like, you're used to seeing several homes that look the same, and when you go through, more of a standard neighborhood, I guess. Again, all single-story homes. Again, here, you see the, the difference in our home elevations.
I think I've heard, this is a lot of detail. I mean, we're not in the market to buy a home.
Yep. I was good.
It's just a little too much detail about the actual homes that is not relevant.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I was giving you five minutes, so.
Great, hey, I get it. You guys are busy. I was just trying...
Other applicant already, combination, it's getting too long.
Yeah. If you, do you have any questions?
Okay, I do not. Does any, any commissioners have questions?
I kind of do.
Okay.
Not specifically about this per se, but I would like to hear from Mr. Butler about, you know, how our thinking stands at the moment on these gated communities. The streets are private, but they have to be built to city standards, don't they? I think...
Yes, and the first CE covers that.
So, I mean, how do we feel about, I mean, there's a trade-off with connectivity, clearly, and there's an actual reason for that here, which maybe is, you know, more valid than somewhere here, certainly. And as a daughter of an elderly mother, I, you know, the idea of something like this is very appealing. But in terms of the city and its policies and how we look at these things, I mean, this is a piece of property that could very well end up being surrounded by other residential uses, and we are, you know, cutting off connectivity, at least to this piece of it. How do we feel about that?
Well, in the past, we've recommended, just in, in similar situations, going ahead and, and putting a stub because one never knows how long a subdivision is going to be private. It could be that in a few decades, it's, you know, the streets are made public, which is one of the reasons why we ask for them to build it to public standards. So, you know, I think we, staff would still recommend a stub, but it's understandable why they would object. Still a good idea in the long term, in my opinion.
And I'm inclined to agree because I think unless there, it's been sufficiently proven that there is a greater physical reason that we can't do it, then I feel like we should. And I, I seem to recall us having this conversation numerous times. Sorry that you all haven't been here for that, but we've talked about it again and again. And to me, we just need to hold our developers to a higher standard.
We actually talked about one of the complexities of that last time when we talked about Williamson Farms, because, and I think we're going to talk about it again today, was that, you know, there was a potential crash gate there, but there wasn't a secondary means of access to the street. And the idea was that Williamson Farm was private, and they could cut it off at any point. And I think there's, you know, to Mr. Butler's point, I think requiring the connection to the west is better long-term planning because we don't necessarily know. It can be crash gated all the same. It's still private streets. It doesn't preclude them from doing that. It just opens up our field of opportunity for the future. I mean, that, it seems like a very reasonable request under all the circumstances to me.
And it's also possible that, you know, this could be successful, and they might, you know, it's hypothetical, but you could put another private development next door to the west, and it would, you know, just be an extension of this development.
Yeah, it's hard to say. I mean, that's why connectivity is such a challenge for us. Mr. Colitas, you know that. You've been here enough to know. It's, and I understand in the nature too, is that this development's very compact. It's on a smaller piece of property. There's fewer lots. So when you start trying to, you know, cut that up for more streets, I get it. But at the end of the day, we have a prevailing policy, which I support, which is connectivity. And even though you guys have got the right to crash gate it, you know, so what, what say you, sir?
Oh, I, no, I, I understand what you're saying, that property to the west, I foresee in the future being commercial of some sort.
We don't know.
We don't, we don't know that for sure, but, you know, as, as having access from the outside, it would have to be a crash gate because it is a, you know, private... it would have to be a crash gate because it is a, you know, private community.
And that's fine.
And, and you're just saying.
Providing a stub.
Have another stub out with a crash gate.
And there, there is a retaining wall that'll be there. So there'll have to be, you know, some grade difference. There'll have to be kind of a ramped-up street to make that happen. So physical barrier-wise, there will be a barrier due to the grade difference of the site to tear it off, to get the lots to be flat. Because it does slope quite a bit from, from the east, from west to east. So that's kind of the intent. So we do have a physical barrier per se. I know the code, you know, for the subdivision ordinance is to say, you know, unless there's some type of physical barrier. So technically there is, there will be, because we'll have a retaining wall on that whole backside. So if, if you needed a reason for that barrier, that, there is a barrier that would be there, so.
What is the minimum street slope on a residential, or maximum? Yeah, that, it might be a little steep.
Is there a general agreement or a general disagreement? We kind of need a decision on this point here.
If, if that's a requirement that you're asking, then yes, we would be in agreement to that.
Okay, so that would then amend the TE three, would be leaving that instead of deleting it. So a street sub west residential land shall be provided. Yeah.
What on the, and then on the east side?
The east side, there's no stub from the other side.
It's buried, yeah, there's a creek there, there's no access. And on the south, there's obviously a creek and there's no access, flood plain on the south.
Okay. I do have one person who signed up to speak on this, so I'd like to call him on, on him at this time. Jason Perez, do you want to be heard on this item? Okay. All right, I don't have anybody else signed up to speak. Other commissioners have any other comments on this one? All right, so just a summary then, real quickly, of PUD 1898, where it stands today. We have amended TE two to require it to read as follows. Sidewalks shall be installed on one side of the private streets and drives, and TE three remains. So I can't make a motion, but if I did, with those two TEs amended, I'd make a motion to recommend approval to city council. So if someone could do that for me, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1898 with the following amendments to technical evaluations. The technical evaluation number two, sidewalks shall be installed on one side of streets and private drives.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion's been made, it's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval to city council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 13, which is a companion item. Mr. Butler?
This is KC 7445, preliminary plat of Bella Rose, located north of Northwest 150th Street and east of North MacArthur Boulevard.
Dean Colita, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4045 Northwest 64th Street. Continuation of the, of the last item there. And the TEs that are established, the number two was in reference to the connectivity. So, you know, we basically don't need the variance on, on number two since we agreed to the stub road to the west. There is a variance in number three, do it to be in private streets. It's just the addressing side of things. So that's, that is the other variance we've got. And the other TEs, we agree to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colita. So I'll just note for the purpose of the record that staff tells us that the design of this preliminary plat, plat does conform to the subdivision regulations as they relate to access requirements. And then that there's two variance requests to the subdivision regulations, one of which Mr. Colita no longer needs because we're providing the connection. So TE two can remain. TE three, we do need the variance. So I don't have anybody sign up to speak on this. I don't know if anybody has any comments, but if not, I'd take a motion to approve the preliminary plat. But we need to take a motion on the variance first, and that's section 5.4.2E5 of the subdivision regulations. Somebody, anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance, which I think is listed as item three, you said, correct?
That's correct. So I have a motion to approve the variance for TE three. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. There we go. And that variance request is approved. Just need a motion on the item to approve the plat.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, and I believe that is with TEs now, all except for TE two, correct?
All of them are good. They don't need the variance, they're agreeing to provide the connection.
Okay, so, subject to all the TEs.
Okay. A motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is approved.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda is item 14.
This is KC 7442, final plat, a replat of portions of the Wheeler District Phase Two, located south of Southwest 15th Street and west of Southwestern Avenue, and a variance to section 5.4.2. E. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers, representing the developer. We've read the staff report, regrouped the TEs, and just request approval of the plat this, this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Govine, this is your word, sir. Do you have comments or questions on this one?
I have no questions, but I'd like to hear from anyone else that, that does.
Okay, well, there, there is a variance on this one. I will just note for the purpose of the record that we're told that the final plat does conform to PUD 1611, which is the underlying zoning, and to the approved preliminary plat. Also just note that when this was approved, the preliminary plat was approved in June of '16, that, that the final plat presented does reflect variances that were granted by the Planning Commission at that time. And those, those variances are outlined in the staff report. At this point, the developer does need a variance on the final plat for section 5.4.2E5 of the subdivision regulations. So if you, if there's, and I do not have anybody sign up to speak, but I guess I'll ask, but it's a caution, is everybody wants to be heard on C 7442? Okay. Commissioner Govine, if you'd like to make a motion on the variance section first, and then after that vote, we'll take a motion on the item.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number, TE number three, variance to section 5.4.2. E. 5.
Of the subdivision regulations? We try to make those as complicated as possible, is my understanding. So it takes a really long time to say them, so get used to that. That, motion to approve that variance has been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. We're going to need six of those, at least in the affirmative for the variance. All votes should be cast. And the variance is approved with eight votes. Need a motion just on the final plat itself, Commissioner Govine, subject to the technical evaluations.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve C 7442, including the technical evaluations one through six.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the final plat, C 7442. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is approved. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda today is item 16, because item 15 was continued to June the 23rd. Mr. Butler?
This is KC 7444, a preliminary plat of Summit Ridge Villas, located east of Broadway Extension and north of East Hefner Road. Also variances, section 5.2.8. D, 5.3.1. D. 5, and 5.4.2. E. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. This is a, a plat that would allow a duplex development. It is worth noting, it's zoned R4, but we are going to develop this as duplexes, similar to the manner in which my client developed that tract immediately north and east. Also zoned R4, but developed as duplexes. As it relates to the TEs, we agreed to TEs one, six, seven, and eight. My belief is that we can delete TEs two, three, and five because we will be meeting the regulations. As it relates to five, we will meet that regulation as it relates to the common area. And on two and three, we will provide a stub at the final plat to the south to connect to, I believe it is, that stub that exists. There's an existing stub right there, yeah. So we'll provide that stub, which I believe means we don't need the variance and we can delete TEs two and three. We do need a variance on TE four, the same variance we received on the development to the north and east. These are private drives, and without the variance, we'd have to label these as one address with various units. That obviously is a, a problem when it comes to marketing and, and getting the ability to have packages delivered. So the ability to name the private drive individual addresses is what we need. We need a variance for that. And again, it's the same variance that you granted to that development to the northeast. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. Commissioner Pennington, this is your word, sir. Do you have questions or comments for the applicant?
I do not, and I support it.
Okay, let me ask, is there anybody who wants to be heard on C 7444? Okay, all right, well, if there's no discussion from commissioners on it and you're prepared to make the motion, let's have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance to section 5.4.2. E. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
That's a popular one today.
It is.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes on approving the variance. All votes should be cast. And that variance is approved. See a motion on the item?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve C 7444 and remove TE two, TE three, and TE five.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat, C 7444. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle, subject to the technical evaluations as amended in the record by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda today is item 17. Mr. Butler?
This is PUD 1895, application to rezone 3903 Northwest 178th Street from R1.
Hello, Clint Morris with Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4045 Northwest 64th Street, representing the developer. I apologize again, I did not bring staff comments for the pud, but I believe that everything was covered from the last meeting, except for the east access. And then when I spoke to you, I think we resolved the issue on the facade. So that language has been addressed. East access, we'd like to, we're going to ask for a variance. Last meeting, we talked about putting the east access in, in track three. And then I think there was a misunderstanding, and I think east access was to be placed in the residential portion. But the tract to the east is pud, base zoning C3 and I1. So in order to keep the separation from the residential and the C3, we're, we're going to request a variance to eliminate the east access. Track three, which is going to be proposed, many storage, will not have any dedicated right-of-way for a street within that at all. So, you know, basically, everything along the east line is going to have storage units.
Okay, so just kind of a friendly reminder for commissioners. I know there were a couple of people that were not with us last time. So we talked about this case, PUD 1895, and a couple of things. I do have somebody signed up to speak, and I certainly will, will call on you. But just a couple of comments. One, I did email back and forth after the last meeting when the continues is granted with Mr. Morris. I am in agreement with the facade regulation information that was submitted to, and that was submitted to staff, Mr. Morris, is that correct?
No, I don't believe it was.
They're going to need that.
Okay, that's fine.
Let me just read it into the record for the purposes of making sure we're memorializing. It essentially accomplishes what our issue was. So it just reads, the new section 9.1 reads as follows. Exterior building wall finish on all main structures exclusive of windows and doors shall consist of brick veneer, rock, or stone masonry, stucco, fiber, cement, siding, or other similar type finish, including EFAS. No more than 30% EFAS shall be permitted. No wood shall be used as a, as a veneer. Wood shall only be used as an accent material. Exposed metal or concrete block buildings shall not be permitted. So essentially, you can have 30% EFAS, otherwise it has to be one of those facades. There was a math issue there, we have another one of those later today. Additionally, in the I1 uses, which I'm very pleased with, as it says, the exterior wall finish for storage units exclusive of doors shall consist of a brick veneer. So, so that's great, I have no issue with that. I'm a little torn on this, and I asked Mr. Morris if he objected to a connection to the west and to the east. We just had this conversation with Mr. Morris, got the benefit and listened to. So, but I'm a little torn, so I want some feedback. On the west, it's not the city of Oklahoma City land. It, it becomes county property. At the same time, it's at least conceivable that at some point it could be. And for the same arguments we just made, I'm not sure that denying a connection there is in the best long-term interest of supporting connectivity.
But I can help you out with the west. In the last meeting, and I forgot to mention this, the developer has agreed to provide a connection to the west. He's looking at the tract immediately to the west, purchasing it, and we, we will plan on providing at least one, if not two, connections to that development.
Okay, so that would be TE five.
Yeah, so we're fine with one to the west.
Okay, and then you are making it easy. Hopefully you'll make it easier on the other two. On the east, I'm still torn. PUD 1871, we're told in our staff report, is a mix of, basically, commercial and light industrial property that was zoned in 2002. So it's pretty deep in the property from 178th, but it is off of Portland. My understanding is that Portland is a highway, though, so you can't just take an access off of it, right? Can someone confirm that for me? Because that was confusing to me if they would even, if, if, in other words, if it developed to a front Portland, could they gain access and pull commercial development in from the east all the way to the west side? But I don't know, I mean, I also don't know, even if that weren't true, that I don't want to put a connection there in the event that it develops residentially. That's awfully, it's an awfully big parcel to assume it's going to develop commercial. And again, to deny the connectivity there, it just doesn't make a ton of sense to me from the Planning Commission's perspective. It may not make sense from your perspective, but it doesn't make sense from my perspective. So I'd just like a little bit of comment and feedback on that from staff and then some commissioner feedback on that as well.
So as far as the connection from, on the highway department, that, that is possible. They would have to obtain ODOT permit for that street stub or driveways to come off of there. That is a possibility, they do that all the time.
Right, but in other words, it's a state highway, so they don't just come here and ask for one and we grant it.
Exactly.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because that's kind of a strange.
Yeah, and it would actually have to go through both approval processes. It would have to go through ODOT approval for that, and then the city would have to grant approval for the driveway as well, or for the street as well.
Got it. For those of you who don't make it that far north, I mean, Portland is now essentially, it's a highway and divided and designed to be faster, and it's kind of an extension of Lake Hefner Parkway, so. But at any rate, I feel like the east connection should be required. I asked for it, the applicant didn't agree to provide it. My opinion is it should be provided. Does anybody else have a different feeling on that, or with all that information? Okay, so, so there would need to be a connection to the west and there would need to be a connection to the east.
I, I guess my question is, is it's currently zoned C3 and I1.
Well, it's, it's currently zoned PUD 871. And the, and the underlying allowances would be C3 and I1.
Correct.
But we don't know how that's going to develop out. So you can stub it, and I guess is your concern being that these are public streets, that if you provide a stub and it becomes commercial development, now you're allowing commercial development into the tract?
It goes against the city code. C3 is supposed to not have a physical connection to residential areas.
I get it.
And we don't know what's going to happen to that property.
I get that, too.
That's why we want the connection, because we don't know.
But, but then if you provide the connection and they do develop at C3, then you're violating your own code. That's what I don't understand.
I, I, Mr. Morris, I understand. I don't disagree with you. So if we had an application that was before us and you, and you wanted to not provide connectivity, and let's say track three didn't belong to you, which is, you know, your I1 tract here, and you said, look, we don't want connectivity to our neighborhood next door, we would all agree with that. And that's why I'm torn, is it's like, how do you allow for the connection in case it does develop residential, but then you're doing these people essentially a disservice if it develops commercially, because now you're letting commercial traffic into the neighborhood?
Is it a private street on his property?
No, those are, these are public streets here, which is, they can't, they're not gating it, so. That's what I'm saying, it's a tough one, I was really torn by it.
Is it in fact the case that our code would not permit the connection if it is developed commercially and/or industrially?
Be closed?
I mean, it, the stub will be there.
No, it's, it's just, if, I mean, I think it's a policy issue. It wouldn't violate our subdivision regulations for the commercial tract to connect to the residential tract.
But it, it actually does, and if you look at the definition of C3 zoning in the. It actually does, and if you look at the definition of C3 zoning in the county code, it specifically says that there should be a physical barrier between C3 and residential, which means no connection.
Yeah, then there'll be a barrier there, but the stub will be there in case the property develops.
Is that what we do?
The barrier would be required but for a street access.
Okay.
There is one more option that the code, that the subregs allow, and it would be to put in a 50-foot easement and reserve that for future connection if the property to the west goes residential.
You mean to the east?
Excuse me, to the east, and then it would be that developer to the east responsibility to pave that.
I like that. That's, that's what we're looking for, JJ, where were you five minutes ago?
Can that, can that be...
An empty lot, basically?
Can that be dedicated right-of-way? Without, and we just wouldn't construct a stub?
Yes, there's a provision for that in the subregs, and I think it has to be noted on the plat that it's reserved for a street, but if...
So I could dedicate the right-of-way there, we just won't build the street?
Right, and if the property next door develops differently than residential, then you can develop it as a lot in the future.
I might, we might do that, take a lot out there, and then provide 50-foot of right-of-way, and then put the remainder of it being common area, and then down the road, maybe that can be taken care of, the developer can get that lot back and develop it.
Another problem solved.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, I'm male, so I can only do one thing at a time. So let me try the language, and you tell me if you're in agreement with it, and then I'll look for some sort of like ear pull or nose twitch from JJ to evidence agreement. So TE6, proposed, again, if you want to be heard on this item, don't panic, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as we hear comments. So we're going to provide TE6, which is going to require 50 feet of right-of-way to allow, or shall be provided to allow connection to the east, to the tract to the east.
Maybe we, what we do is we make it a little bit more vague. In other words, 50-foot of right-of-way or 50-foot roadway easement.
50 feet of right-of-way or roadway easement?
Yeah, because I don't, I don't know the process to get that right-of-way abandoned.
I understand, we're not trying to trap you, and there's no gotcha here.
I'm just trying to provide us more options down the road. You're still going to get a road through there, if it develops residential.
So 50-foot of right-of-way or roadway easement shall be provided to allow for connection to the east, the tract to the east. You agreement with that? There's a, there it is, okay. So that would be T, proposed TE6. TE5, just in case those of you at home are listening, would be requiring a connection to the west. So with that, it's alleviated all my concerns, at least as it relates to the TEs and the conversations that we had from the last meeting, okay?
I believe, yeah.
Okay, I do have somebody who signed up to speak, so I want to ask them at this time if they'd like to be heard on this. Jason Perez, you also signed up for this item, would you like to be heard, sir? Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Jason Perez, my address is 1513 Northwest 15th Street. I appreciate your time, honorable commission members. Again, my name is Jason Perez, and I am the superintendent for Deer Creek Public Schools. I actually came here not for this necessarily, so this kind of caught me by surprise. I'm new to my position in the district, this is my first year. I've had lots of positive interactions with developers, that they've looked into Deer Creek, we're obviously growing at a tremendous rate, and so that's always a major concern for us, is making sure that, you know, that the growth we have is something that we can sustain, both with our infrastructure in our community, but also in our schools. This was not on my radar at all, which is a little concerning to me, is we're talking about 297 lots being placed on 80 acres. That's pretty significant growth for our schools, that's going to be the equivalent of about an elementary school. You know, just for, to kind of understand what we're dealing with in Deer Creek, we're growing at a rate of 300 to 500 students per year, it's June 9th. We already have over 600 new enrollments for the upcoming school year, for us, so to, you know, put that in perspective, again, we're talking about an elementary school. And recently Deer Creek did pass a bond election, which will increase the district's capacity to accept more students without overcrowding our classroom, and this was a $131 million bond issue, but it's the last one of that size that we can pass for at least 10 years. And the, the capacity that this allowed us for allows for the current growth that we're facing, when we have developers that want to do high-density developments in our area that don't really match up with the county master plan of the two-acre lots, it puts us in a really bad situation when it comes to making sure we have enough classroom space for all of our kids, let alone the situations with being in a community that has two-lane roads. I can tell you, if you come by my office at 8 o'clock or 3 o'clock, you're not getting to see me, because the traffic is at a standstill everywhere. I don't see that really changing anytime soon. 178th Street is, is a very busy area for us as well, and so to bring this in, the developers have not spoken with us at all, there's no idea to support schools or do anything to be able to help the community that they're impacting with this. And so as part of my job, I do take great pride in representing the needs of my school and the community it serves, so allowing rezoning of this land so that the developers can alter the land use plan in our county, it leads to a significant burden for Deer Creek schools and Deer Creek community at large. And these aren't the burdens that the developers have to bear, because it's not their community. And I understand the desire to maximize profits, but as public servants, I think it's our job to make sure that the community is taken care of first. So I just wanted to share my thoughts on that with all of you, and I appreciate your time.
Well, we appreciate you being here a lot, and I was going to comment on this later for the commissioners that didn't attend, but I want to compliment you and thank you for your participation in the annual Planning Commission School Meeting, or Planning Department School Meeting, I should say. I really appreciated you attending that. That was put in place a couple of years ago, because superintendents, just like you, would come down here and share those concerns, and we as a body, along with many other political subdivisions, have to balance the growth our communities experiencing, the need for housing, the need for all types of housing, affordable housing right on up, to what you saw earlier, which was senior housing. And we're challenged by the same things, being able to have enough money to build roads quickly enough and all that, so, but two years ago, we put in place that meeting so that we could start a dialogue and make sure that to the best of our ability, we were supporting each other, instead of working against one another, or at least feeling that way. And I'm glad to see that you're here continuing that. You know, one thing that's important to note here in this item is, and this is something that we always look at, and if it doesn't get relayed to you in the notices, they're in these staff reports that all these people read, which is, we're told, for example, that this land, being in the city of Oklahoma City, the, the first thing we look at is the comprehensive plan, kind of what's called the LUDA, and that in this case is urban low intensity, so it's ripe for housing, it was determined that, and that was something that we talked about in that school meeting, was LUDAs, and that being kind of the precursor to zoning. This property is actually already zoned R1, so without any notice, they could have gone out and pulled permits and just started building R1 houses on 4,000-square-foot lots without any of us having an opportunity to weigh in on what was going to happen, and that was a right that existed in the property today. Another part of that school meeting was showing you that zoning map, so that you can see where is the zoning right now, because that's the first lead into real development coming your direction. And then what you're going to see in the companion item here is that there is also a corresponding plat, and, and they've shown us what that exhibit's going to look like, even though, I know this is confusing, but for the purposes of this case, it's just a site, that's just a site plan in this case, and in the next case, it becomes the plat. But all that said, they're bringing that forward today, which is kind of that next phase, and then they showed you where they were pulling permits and so forth. So I have to support this application, because it's just a continuation of the existing rights, these are vested rights that exist with the land today, and these folks are just developing it in line with the way it is. In fact, they're actually altering the number of homes that could be built because of the introduction of the commercial portion of the tract there at the bottom, which is going to allow for some commercial development and some mini-storage or self-storage development as well. So I think it's an improvement from what could have been done, and while I know it's going to create growth challenges for you, I just kind of wanted to share your frustrated sentiment that it's creating growth challenges for us. And I also want to encourage you to continue to talk with Councilman Stonecypher and the Planning Department, to, to make sure that you have the latest information that you can to help make decisions for the district.
And I appreciate that, sir, because this is, you know, this is all new ground for me, and, and having been in districts before where you, you welcome the growth, it's, it's a perplexing sort of situation to be in, but at the same time, I do feel the frustration of my community. It's not necessarily about, well, we can't have these small houses, it's about the amount of houses that are trying to be placed at one time, and the fact that, you know, we are growing in all the communities, but even at the annual schools meeting, we saw how significant Deer Creek and Piedmont is growing in comparison to everybody else. And, and that's something I, that, whether there's, you know, that's something that these developers or any other developers in the room would consider, is communicating with the schools, you know, the, we, we need to be able to be better informed, and some developers are doing a great job with that, and others are just are not.
Yep, well, that's great feedback to provide the Planning Department, because they're in contact with the developers all the time, and I think them being able to provide that feedback would be helpful. But I also would, would ask you to relay to your PTA, your parents, your district members, there is no such policy that exists, I've been on this commission for five years that I've ever heard of, that protects Deer Creek as two-acre development, that there's no such policy. This has been zoned R1, there's no telling how long, and that's true of a lot of areas out here. So I live at Council and Memorial, I'm intimately familiar with the challenges of the roadways out here, we've talked about it at length in here, so I share your sentiment, but I got to support this one for all the reasons I just...
Well, and I'm not sure what goes into, you know, anything like that. I would say, though, that if we're going to allow this type of housing developments to occur, there's got to be just something more done, especially with roads, because we're not going to be able to move buses at the rate we're going.
Mr. Chair, if I may just emphasize just a tad of what he's saying, and first of all, thank you for all the comments, and they're all very well received. To emphasize what he's saying about how it was already zoned R1, and being sure, if you already looked at it, what all is R1 around there, they know better than I do, Scott, if you don't want to tell them what this could have potentially been, anywhere it was R1. I think you said 200 and something houses, I think this could have been, could have, have even been multifamily apartments?
It, well, it could have been multifamily, because it was zoned R1, but it's, there's a component of this that's going to be duplexes, there, it could have been a component that's apartments.
So I think it could have been 1,000, 2,000 homes? I mean, when you see an 80-acre tract that's R1, this application's actually about as modest as you're maybe going to get, where they, they could have broke ground on a couple thousand homes, I believe. So I hate to be boring, you know, it's even worse than you might be saying, so when you see R1 and working with our staff, they didn't have to come here and they could have built a couple thousand homes.
And, and I'll also just say, too, I think, you know, in instances like, like this, you know, we, I mean, we have to have some reason, because to me, on the other side of, of your frustration and of trying to, trying to allow growth to happen in some regimented fashion, is, like I said, we have a, just like a lot of cases, we have a very serious housing problem in Oklahoma City. We have more people moving to the Oklahoma City metropolitan area than we can keep up with, and that's not just Deer Creek, that's everywhere. Oklahoma City, these numbers may not be exactly right, but they're real close, in 2021, we issued 6,838 building permits or something like that, and yet in the 2020 census, the last year it was there, we had almost 12,000 net new residents. That's just Oklahoma City, say nothing of Edmund Norman, all the areas that sort of feed into schools and streets and all that. So we're just going through a pretty rapid expansion, but the idea that we would say, you know what, no more building of homes, and watch housing prices and everything else just continue to, is a very tough thing for us, as, as a recommending body to say that that makes sense from a policy standpoint.
Well, and I understand, and I was just in the housing market myself, taking on a new job and having to relocate, but I would also say that when you look at your Edmonds, your Oklahoma City metro areas, Moore, they also have plenty of businesses where they can garner those types of corporate taxes, sales taxes, Deer Creek doesn't have any of that, all of ours is essentially residential. When we look at it from our perspective, every home that's built, although we may receive tax money for that, that's basically going directly to the kids that are tied to that house. So we continue to grow, but we don't really continue to receive the, the funding to be able to provide more space for these kids. So, well, I, I understand your situation, and I know there's nothing that you can do in that, it, it doesn't really change our frustration and perspective, both for the district and for the community, because I'm representing families that want to make sure their kids can have a good education, and they're not having kindergarteners crammed in the classroom of 40.
Yeah, we respect that.
And can we add to that list of people to reach out to? The state legislature. They are the ones who fund education, these limitations that you have with your bonding capability, the funding that you get per student, all of that is an issue that the state legislature needs to address. And you aren't the first superintendent to be here, that's why we started the, the annual meeting, but this is serious. We need to figure out a way to come together and lobby the legislature to change the law so you can scale up when you need to, because why would we do anything to limit the amazing growth that Oklahoma City is having? We want this to happen every, in every part of, of the Oklahoma City metro. Oh, well, I, I did my fair share of aggravating plenty of legislators in my first year, so looking forward to next session.
Well, Mr. Perez, we, we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would add, one small ray of hope, at least, I hope, is that, you know, even though we're here today and most likely going to approve this, the zoning is really sort of the front end of this, there'll be a plating process, the full development and the, the realization of, of X number of residential properties with kids to send off to school is still years away, so.
Yes, ma'am.
And we talked about that, Commissioner Powers, a little bit at the school meeting, just that once the final plat is approved and they actually start pulling permits, it's not like you just wake up the next day and there's 290 houses. It's a multi-year process, so, anyway, thank you very much. I don't have anybody else signed up to speak, is there anybody else that would like to be heard on PUD 1895? Okay, all right, well, if there's no further discussion from commissioners on this, I would make a motion to recommend approval if I could, but I can't. I will just say, for clarification purposes, where we are, TE1 would be deleted.
Or rather, replaced with the language about the 50-foot.
Well, yeah, yeah, we, I added that in, but TE2, we just need to delete the question mark.
Yeah.
TE5, which should require a connection to the west, so a connection to the west shall be provided, and TE6 would be a 50-foot right-of-way or roadway easement shall be provided to allow for a future connection to the tract to the east. So...
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the TEs, as you just read them.
Thank you very much. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1895, subject to the technical evaluations as amended and read into the record. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
She's voted aye. Now all votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Next item on the agenda is the companion item, item 18. Mr. Butler?
Yes, this is KC 7439, preliminary plat of Anthem, located north of Northwest 178th Street and west of North Portland Avenue. Variance is to sections 5.3.1, D.1.5, and 5.3.1.1.2.
Welcome back.
Yes, sorry, Clint Morris, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4045 Northwest 64th, here representing the developer. This is a preliminary plat, supplement to the plat that was just approved.
So essentially, the TEs, Mr. Morris, would all just remain, because we agreed in the last one about the roadway easement, so I guess we need to modify that language, but, and then the TE3 was affected by the last item as well, so you don't need TE, or you don't need the variance to TE3, and then TE2, we don't need, we can't really do a variance there, right, JJ? So we just need to say, we need to incorporate that same TE language from the last item?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll delete TE2 as a matter of clarity, and add TE9, and put the language in which read as follows, 50 feet of right-of-way or roadway easement shall be provided to allow connection to the tract to the east. I don't have any other issues on this. Other planning commissioners have questions on this? Okay, I'll just note for the purpose of the record, according to staff, the design of preliminary plat conforms with the subdivision regulations as they relate to subdivisions with between 101 and 200 lots and the underlying zoning. And with that, if someone would like to make a motion deleting TE2 and adding TE9, I'd take it.
I think it makes on 3.
No, that one's been, that one has been deleted, because TE6, he agreed, or TE4, excuse me, we deleted the provision for the 2,600 block length.
I missed that. Are we keeping TE4?
We are keeping TE4.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, deleting TE2, adding TE9 as it was read.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat, C-7439. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes, and that item is approved. Good luck with your project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda today is item 19.
This is KC 7445. This is KC 7440, preliminary plat of Flying Hawk Ranch, located south of Southwest 119th Street and west of South Meridian Avenue, and variances to sections 5.2.8. D and 5.3.1. Point D, point 5 of the subdivision regulations.
Hi, welcome back.
Thank you. David Jones with the Orion Group, 2201 Woodhill Road. Yeah, we were here a couple of weeks ago to discuss this and requested a continuance based upon some discussion that we were having as it related to interconnectivity. I think today we can simplify those matters readily. The cross-access agreement that we had discussed two weeks ago basically is complete from a language standpoint. It has not been approved by the HOA. However, that being said, we're going to go ahead and accept TE5, which is the requirement to provide a second access to Southwest 119th Street, which in all due purpose really kind of excludes the need for the cross-access agreement, other than that is a private drive. So our ability to connect to that at any point in time in the future would have to be approved by the Williamson Farm Group anyway, so we will need that cross-access, but it won't impact the TE5. We are willing to provide that secondary access to Southwest 119th Street, so provide two there. The only other item we really had in discussion that we left at that point was TE6, which was the interconnectivity recommendations for connectivity to the west and to the south. At that point in time, I think we agreed that the west connection because of the, excuse me, the floodplain components and the floodway on the west side did not seem to be necessary, but the southern one did. We're also still in agreement with that in providing that southern connection point to the I-2 location to the south of us. So with that said, all the other TEs we're in agreement with, and if we could adjust the language on TE6 to account for the elimination of that west cross-access point, then we are, we're golden.
Understood. Commissioner Fraley, this is your ward, ma'am. Do you have other questions or concerns for the applicant on this?
Um, I mean, I agree with agreement of TE5 and listening to the discussion on TE6, in agreement of the interconnection to the south, I would recommend approval if nobody has any other comments.
Okay, let me just get clarification from staff if I could. So the variance to TE6, since we're still gonna allow the lack of connection to the west, I think we still need that variance, I think.
Just as to the west. Just reword it to the-
Just to the west. Yeah, just to the west. Okay. So we'll just amend that variance language to a variance to section 5.3.1D5 relating only to a western connection.
Yes, sir.
You good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. So if there's no questions, I don't know if anybody signed up to speak on this, but it's a caution, C 7440, speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. If there's no further discussion on this, I'll take a motion, Commissioner Fraley, if you wanna make it. And we need to make, I'm sorry, let me help you. We need a motion on-
The variance.
The variance to 6 as outlined. TE5 is fine as it is.
Okay. I make a motion to recommend approval of the variance in TE6 as noted to the west only read into record.
There you go. I have a motion to approve the variance to section 5.3.1.5. Point D, point 5 of the subdivision regulations relating only to the western access. Please cast your vote, or the western connection. Please second that. Commissioner Hinkle, thank you. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that variance is approved. I just need a motion on the preliminary plat, Commissioner Fraley.
I make a motion to recommend approval on C 7440 with the TEs incorporated.
Okay. And I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat for C 7440. This is final action, I know you know that, Mr. Jones, I'm just clarifying. Been seconded by somebody at some point. Been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that preliminary plat is approved. Thank you and good luck. Next item on the agenda today is item 20.
This is SPOD 1405, application to rezone 3721 Northwestern Avenue from C3.
Good afternoon. My name's Jared Smith, 3721 Northwestern Avenue. I'm a small business owner here in Oklahoma City with a barber shop called Weldon Jack. We're here to request rezoning from C3 Commercial to Spud. We were here a couple of weeks ago and we've taken care of some items that Mrs. Powers brought up. We were able to meet with her and put a plan together that works for both parties, and had a great response from our community there, and hope to come to a conclusion today so we can get that project started.
Understood. Well, we appreciate you having you back and thanks for taking the time to try and work through it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Powers, you've obviously been intimately involved in this and it's your word, so I'll let you tell us where we are.
If you could, if you could just bear with me a little bit, we, because the time was sort of short and just the extinctions of other activities and business and actual work, that kind of stuff, you know, we met Monday, we traded back and forth some emails and I've kind of boiled it down to 10, I'm sorry, TEs, but they're all very simple. We're gonna remove two uses, the animal sales and services and the outdoor sales and display. We're going to add some language at the end of permitted uses that says that no commercial use shall be made of the roof on the structure or any of the exterior walkways on the west side of the building. There's a residence right there, and in particular, no food or beverages will be sold or served in those spaces. Commissioner Claire had mentioned to me at the end of our hearing last time that he would not be here today, but had a real concern about the landscaping not being of the sort that just digs down through the pavement and sets up planting areas. He thought that they needed to be raised beds. I proposed that and the applicant was perfectly willing to do that, so we're going to strike some language that there's going to be existing hard-service impervious areas removed and add the words raised bed, so it'll read the existing monumental tree on the northwest corner of the property shall be preserved and five new landscaping areas shall be created in raised beds on the site.
And that would be TE3?
Yeah, that would be TE.
Okay.
So 4 is under signage. As to the existing pole, there's a historic little just medallion sign there that they would at some point like to restore and refurbish, kind of like the Texaco sign that's north of, what's the name of that place?
Oak.
The pump. So sort of like that. And I wanted to add some language to it about not being lit, so it'll say, as to the existing pole, it'll read, I'm sorry. We're going to, we're going to remove the language that says, no, we're just gonna add language that says, provided the face shall not be internally lit. Then there's some reference there to a blade sign or to the other architectural, sculptural, and artwork on the, on the property not being considered signage. So we're gonna insert the words without text, so that it will actually read, one freestanding sign on the existing pole sign on the northeast corner of the property shall be permitted, provided the face shall not be internally lighted. Maximum area assigned, 25 feet, sculptures, decorative artwork, and architectural ornaments without text, as conceptualized in Exhibit C, shall not be considered freestanding signs, blah, blah, blah.
So that would be, that would be amending 8.1, as you were just reading into the record, would be TE4?
Yes.
Okay.
TE5, we're gonna eliminate the first sentence under 8.2 and insert instead, attached signage shall consist of non-internally illuminated lettering on the east face of the main structure, on the metal railing above the roof, as conceptualized in Exhibit C, backlit lettering is permitted. So they want just their name up there and on the building itself. TE6, attached signage, second sentence is gonna be modified slightly so that it will read additionally, one individual blade sign on the southeast corner of the building may be permitted, providing, and it projects no more than three feet from the building face, limited 75 feet square, square feet in size, shall not be internally lighted, and that any lighting will be extinguished at 10:00 PM. Number seven, beyond signs shall be permitted, consistent with these specified provisions. Number eight, we're gonna change under architectural requirements, the 50% to 70%, and under lighting, we're going to add the language that restoration, adaptation, and use of the existing historic light standards on the site are permitted. Again, there's some little just odd-looking sort of bird-like light standards that have been there forever. And then under parking, we're gonna change the number of required standard parking spaces from 11 to 10, but we're gonna add bicycle parking. And I have all of that here in writing, which I'll be more than happy to provide to the staff.
But that last TE, along with the number of parking spaces and bicycle, was TE10?
Yes.
Okay. I think those have been recorded in the record, and then just for the purposes of solidifying that, you have those in writing that you're gonna submit to staff to ensure they're incorporated into the SPOD application as it moves along the council?
I have, and I also have a redlined version of the last MDS that was submitted and then a clean copy with all these changes already made, so I can provide all that stuff.
And you're in agreement with all of those changes as she read them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from any other commissioners on this one? I don't have anybody else signed up to speak. Is there somebody who wants to be heard on SPOD 1405? Seeing nobody, comments? Oh, okay. Seeing nobody, if you're ready to make the motion, I'll take it.
Thank you, by the way, for your patience.
No.
I know that was a lot to take in. I'm gonna move approval of item number 20, SPOD 1405.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on SPOD 1405, subject to the 10 technical evaluations that were read into the record by Commissioner Powers and will be submitted to staff for inclusion. It's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate all your work on that. Next item is item 21. Mr. Butler?
Item 21 is SPOD 1407, application to rezone 1011 North Douglas Avenue from R3.
Applicant present, there you are.
Yes. Good afternoon. Joe Selby, 36 West Memorial Road, on behalf of the applicant. We were here a couple of weeks ago and there were some issues with the, this is a small six-unit development and three of the units facing Douglas kind of were cut off from the street, so we've gone back to the drawing board and changed the elevations up and there's, we just sent the new renderings yesterday, so hopefully everybody had a chance to look at them. But this is the new concept. So those three units will now face Douglas and be connected with sidewalks. Those are the front doors now, the garages are still in the back, which we all agree looks much better, so we're happy with the changes too.
I love that. That certainly makes it easier.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauvain, this is your ward, sir, and you certainly had a lot of thoughts last time we visited about it, so I'll let you take it from here.
Sure. Mike? Sure, thank you. I really appreciate the revisions that you guys have made. I think we had two concerns last time, and one was the degree of openness and not turning our back to Douglas, which you clearly resolved. The other was the fence and the height of the fence, which I think is a moot point at this stage because you've eliminated that-
Right.
-based on these images. So my question would be, do we need to address any fence issues with the TE, or is that just-
It's still at eight foot. We can change that to six. We're okay with that if that's necessary.
I think the question would be, these are great images, but is this, would someone come along and say, actually, after all, we're gonna put a six-foot fence in front of these? That would be a little, could be a concern because it was a concern that was brought up last time, which is why I'm bringing it up this time.
Right, we would agree to that.
Okay, so I think if we stuck to the language of a four-foot maximum high fence allowance or no fence allowance in the front yard, that would make me happy. The other one that you have is a TE on the trees, and I've kind of opened this up as really a question is, does that, do we remove that TE with the revision to the elevations as they've made? Which I would, I guess maybe I ask the applicant, are you asking for removal of that TE, or are you still okay with that?
What is that? I don't even know, I don't think I've seen that TE, I'm sorry.
It is number two on the staff recommendations of a minimum of three medium trees shall be planted along North Douglas Ave and two along Northwest 9th Street outside of any fence.
Yeah, you can just strike on the outside of any fence.
Okay.
Right, okay, that's fine.
And so just to clarify then, are we, I believe we're, are we adding a TE that says a max, or are we amending the language that's already in the document that says a maximum of four-foot high fence along Douglas, I believe is what?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
So all we would do there then, if I'm following your concern, Commissioner Gauvain, is under site proof screening, which is item 10 on page three of our staff reports, it would start in the second sentence and it would read, no other fencing screening shall be required, but if installed, shall be no less than a four-foot and no greater than an eight-foot high fence or wall. And what you're wanting to do is strike, leave it four feet.
Yeah, I'm wanting to leave it four feet and then no greater than four feet on Douglas. Otherwise, I think higher is probably advisable.
So you could just say, you know, no greater than four feet, I think is sufficient. Change that language, just read no greater than four feet.
Is it easier to just not even require the fence on Douglas in the first place?
Well, I don't think they're gonna build it, but I think his concern is just if they do, that it not be taller than four feet.
Gotcha.
I do have one question. So if there's, they were kind of thinking now at this point that the yards for those three houses are gonna be side yards in between, so if this four-foot fence, I mean, could we-
I see what you're saying.
See what I'm saying?
Yes, no, there would be no issue with putting a six-to-eight-foot fence that connects between the two, the houses.
Between the houses.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't, I would-
So the four-foot fence would be out closer to the street, that's what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's okay. How about this? How about this? My suggestion would be, just to, just to make it easy, is just to add TE3 that just says, no fencing shall be constructed along Douglas in front of the, what would be the east face of the, I guess, the homes.
Yeah, yes.
Just to prevent that fencing.
You know what you're doing here. Yeah, so we add TE3 that says-
No, no fencing shall be constructed along the eastern side of the property and along Douglas.
Yeah, over, yeah. Or in front of, because I mean technically there's, there's the fence, so we want the in front of.
Yeah. And likely they won't do that, but if they, like this rendering, would then an eight-foot, eight-foot fence be okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we could- In between the houses, it's fine. We just, what we're trying to do is prevent it along the street front. So in front of, and I, the reason I'm tripping up is because you could just say the front wall of the house, but I'm not sure by definition that's what that is. So what would be the right language to do that? Just the east front?
Well, we could use within the 30-foot right-of-way or-
Anything forward of the front wall is considered front yard, so you can use the front, front wall.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go. So TE3 would just be, no fencing shall be constructed in front of the front wall of the, of the units along Douglas Boulevard.
Over four feet in height.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on SPOD 1407?
I'd just, I'd just be really clear about this. We're not gonna permit any fencing along Douglas.
We shouldn't.
Or we're limiting it to four feet. I'd prefer that there not be any, but-
I was comfortable with four-foot max because I felt like that's where we were last time, but if, if we want to discuss that further, I mean, it sounds like they're not planning to build a fence anyway, so maybe this isn't an issue and we just say no fence.
Yeah, I would prefer that there not be a fence along Douglas.
That's absolutely fine with me.
I think that's okay.
Okay. All right. So we've amended TE2 and we've added TE3. If there's no further discussion, Commissioner Gauvain, if you want to give it a shot, we'll take a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve Spud 1407, including the addition of TE3, no fencing proud of the front wall on Douglas.
Shall be permitted.
Shall be permitted.
And then on TE2, we're amending to strike the words on the outside of any fence.
Correct, correct, for the street trees.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on SPOD 1407, subject to the TEs as amended and read into the record by Commissioner Gauvain. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast.
I don't have a-
I don't have a voting, thank you.
How would you like to vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers has voted aye. And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your project, and thanks for your work on this with us.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 23, because item 22 was continued until June the 23rd. Mr. Butler?
This is SPUD 1414, application to rezone 524 Northwest 164th Street from R1.
Good afternoon. Mark Zizal, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. For you today is an SPUD application that will allow potentially a small office park, potentially multifamily. We're seeking some flexibility there. Surrounding us, there is -- will be a neighborhood to our south, Whistle Creek. It's the same owner as the developer, but there is a creek between us. There are no homes that will abut immediately to our south. There are three TEs. We agree with all of them and would be happy to answer any questions and would ask for your recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zizal. I don't have anything on this, but this is Commissioner Pennington's ward, which always confuses me when I see Northwest 164th, but it is, so...
Amazing how that could be the case.
Who knew?
No comments from me.
Okay. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on SPUD 1414? Yes, sir. And, oh, I'm so sorry. You're Matt -- Mr. Meredith. Please, come up. Forgive me.
I just have a question about impact on traffic when you rezone these places. With this one and across the street from this one is going to be a church. And that whole mile, there's -- well, it's a long story.
Across the street to the north, in the vacant land to the west of that...
A quarter from this development is going to be a church.
Right.
It's PUD 1497, and it's 40 miles an hour, but nobody does 40 miles an hour. For one mile, there's no traffic control at all. And this street's kind of part -- it had been part Oklahoma City, but we're going to need some traffic control in the Oklahoma City Park.
So there is...
I don't know what you guys do on studying the traffic.
No. No, that's great. So the Oklahoma City -- be careful, a lot of things sensitive. The Oklahoma City Traffic Commission hears these issues, and on OKC.gov, you can find their agenda and their scheduled meetings, and that is who addresses those types of concerns and issues.
But y'all, both these up or downs, every girl's --
I wasn't sure that was...
-- whether the house is affecting traffic?
We don't decide where traffic signals go, no, sir.
Sorry. While we don't determine traffic, we do consider the traffic flow.
Oh, yeah.
And we do take traffic's recommendation as to whether this development is appropriate, but not make decisions on the traffic lights. Just...
I didn't know how you studied the impact of traffic.
Mostly take the recommendation of the city.
Of staff.
The city staff about the traffic. We take their recommendation, but we do consider it, yes.
Yes, sir.
Is anything happening to 164th that we know of?
I'm not aware of any funded city projects on 164th, and staff is shaking their head.
Okay.
So, I mean, this will pay impact fees. I know this area has received a significant amount of money in traffic impact fees, and there's ongoing -- firms have been hired to conduct those studies. So likely, at the arterial intersections, improvements may occur, but I don't know that any of those have been worked out yet.
Yeah. And I apologize for giving such a technical answer. I just was trying to let you know that, to make sure you understood that, no, we do not determine the planning commission...
It's my first time. I didn't know how this worked.
Yeah. No, that's -- and that -- I'm glad -- we're glad you're here, and we're trying to help you. We don't decide that, but to Commissioner La Forge's point, we do consider the recommendation of traffic. And just so you know, what our staff report tells us from traffic here is just that their only concern was that the proposed driveways meet separation requirements of the subdivision regulations. That's it.
Thanks for your help.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith. Appreciate you coming down. If there's no further discussion on SPUD 1414, I'll take a motion on the item. If you'd like to make it, Commissioner Pennington.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of SPUD 1414.
Subject to the technical evaluations.
Subject to the TEs.
And you were in agreement with all those, Mr. Zizal? You said that? Okay.
Sir.
Excellent. So I have a motion. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck. Next item on the agenda is item 24.
This is PUD 1899, application to rezone 9700 West Wilshire Boulevard from PUD 1834.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD that really is just a minor revision to the PUD that you would have recommended for approval last year. Ultimately, City Council approved it on October the 12th of 2021. The only thing we're doing is modifying the nature of the R1 development that could occur within this. Anticipated, you'll see a preliminary plat for R1 in your next meeting, but I do want to address the TEs briefly. We agree with all of them, however, I did hand out for you a copy of the City Council memo that went on October 12th on this item. We agree with 3, 4, and 5 as written on TEs 1 and 2. We would ask to revise that in the same manner that you revised the TE last year. TE 1, as read or as stated in the current staff report, was stated the same way in the staff report in the last application. We agreed at Planning Commission to change it to, "No building shall be constructed in the floodplain or floodway." We'd asked for TE 1 to be revised pursuant to that same language. TE 3 in the old one, but TE 2 here today, that each drive from Wilshire Boulevard will provide access to all parts of the development. We revised that to read, "All access drives shall meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations and Oklahoma City municipal ordinances in place at the time of development." So again, we agree with all the TEs. We would just ask that TEs 1 and 2 be revised pursuant to the same language you revised it to last time.
Understood. This is Commissioner Claire's ward. He's not with us today. I don't have any objection to that. I do actually remember the discussion at least vaguely. Do any other commissioners have questions on this? We did just hear this case.
There seems to be a noticeable lack of any reference to trees. Is that purposeful? And did we talk about that?
No. So we meet the open space requirements, and we say, "No building shall be constructed in floodplain or floodway." One of the TE, you'll notice on page two, they talk about the changes. The last bullet point is decreasing the open space, but then we remedy that. TE 4 says, "Provide the 20% open space," which we agreed to.
Still no reference to trees. What are we doing about the trees? Preservation of them?
The same thing we were going to do in PUD 1834.
Which is?
We're not going to be building within the floodplain or floodway. We are not seeking to amend anything. There you have it. There are no trees except for the floodplain, floodway, and we've agreed to not construct any buildings.
Ah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Would anybody like to be heard on PUD 1899? All right. Seeing nobody, if there's no further discussion, in Commissioner Claire's absence, I'll take a motion from somebody.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1899 with the following amendments to technical evaluations, that TE 1 read as follows, "No building shall be constructed in the floodplain or floodway." That TE 2 read as follows, "All access drives shall meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations and Oklahoma City municipal ordinances in place at the time of development."
Okay. I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck. The remaining balance of our items for individual consideration have been continued until June the 23rd. One in item 25, SP 557, until July 14th. So with that, we'll move on to Planning Commission committees. Commissioner Hinkle, any report from you?
Well, had a good meeting yesterday with the -- or Monday with the schools. Still working on the sign deal, and that's it.
Okay. Excellent. Planning Commission members. Commissioner Powers?
I can't think what it is, so...
Okay. Commissioner Fraley?
I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Privet?
Nada.
Commissioner Hinkle, anything personally? Okay. Commissioner Gauvine?
Nothing today.
Okay. Commissioner Pennington, welcome back.
One thing, I won't be here at the next meeting, so is next meeting your last meeting?
It is.
Well, if you don't mind me saying, right now, appreciated you serving, especially as chair. You've done a great job of being very efficient, especially, but also at the same time, very good. So, sorry I missed your last meeting this next time.
That's all right. I appreciate it, man. It's been a pleasure to serve with you. It really has.
Only another thing I have to say, though. I sure was hoping I was going to find out what they wanted here.
You're going to find out under citizens to be heard.
Oh, we're not there yet. Great. Fantastic.
Well, I'll just say, too, for the benefit of those who didn't participate, and I mentioned it earlier, but we did have the annual schools meeting. I would like to encourage Commissioner Fraley for you to relay to what I think are two very important districts that should be involved in that meeting, the superintendents of UConn Public Schools and Mustang Public Schools, that participating in that meeting on an annual basis or providing a representative sure would benefit their districts in terms of getting information. I'll also just say, the districts that did, that were there, Choctaw, Nakoma Park, Deer Creek, Piedmont, and more, I just really want to thank those districts and their leaders. I was glad I got the opportunity to do that with Deer Creek in person here today, not under the right circumstances, but nevertheless. But just how much I appreciate Planning Department's work on that meeting. Jonathan Land and the folks who did that did an absolutely phenomenal job. The information was well organized. It was digestible. I thought they did a great job, Jeff, of presenting that and conducting the meeting. I'm really hopeful that will continue, and we can encourage participation. I don't know what we did to get, you know, notice out to these folks and encourage them, but we went from 22 districts to four districts pretty quick. And what I would just say is, you know, people are going to keep showing up, and they're going to keep having opinions about what we do and why we do it, and yet, we're going way above and beyond to try to provide that. So if you do connect with district representatives, please remind them that we have that meeting annually and what its purpose is. And then, if staff could circulate that presentation that was done to the commissioners, that would be fantastic because that would allow commissioners to hit the forward button in the future if they're contacted by district representatives and share it. And it also provides great resources that the Planning Department's put together, a website that has -- I was -- I'm serious. I was really impressed. They hit it out of the park. So I just would say that. So that's all I have. Planning Department?
Yeah. A couple of things. Well, first of all, on that, we can also circulate that presentation if we haven't already. I'll check with staff. To the other districts that weren't able to make it. And then, I did ask Marilyn Lammensdorf to come and just take a minute and update us on what's going on this summer for the code update, and while she's making her way up here, the sign code portion of it, we're looking forward to adopting that, but the Supreme Court decision came down, and ODOT, as well as a billboard industry company or two, wanted to kind of hit pause and see what it might mean. And so we'll be meeting with ODOT this month. They wanted to wait till the right time, so that'll be in a week or two, and at which point, we will keep you all informed, of course, but hopefully have some changes that can be made. That will be very minimal, but we'll keep you informed. So Marilyn is going to give us a little update on the code update.
Good afternoon. I think it's still afternoon. I'm Marilyn Lammensdorf. I'm the staff liaison for the code update project. Some of you may or may not know that we are in the process of updating all our zoning codes and subdivision regulations that you use every other week here. And I am listening. I tune in every other week, and I have a big spreadsheet, and every time, y'all say, "Gosh, I wish something..." I write it into the spreadsheet for the consultants, so you're like a focus group on your own. But we wanted to make you aware, we're kind of continuing our outreach to the community because this is, you know, a technical, very technical issue, so we want to kind of slowly make sure that the community is understanding what we're doing. So we are hosting a series of nine open houses at libraries all across the city, and on your -- on this card, if you go to OKC.gov codeupdate, you can see a lot of what we're doing, but if you press "open houses," you can see all the dates. The next one is June 18th at the Almonte Library on Southwest 59th. That's pretty much Ward 6, 3, and 5, and from 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. And we just have some boards, and it's just kind of come and go. There's no presentation, just kind of stump the planner and come, you know, let us know what your concerns are. We have things you can write, and then we also have a new survey out. We did one last year. This is more specific on residential. We've sort of been working on -- we're kind of -- we've gotten so much feedback from y'all and everyone on the rural zones and the urban low, but we're a little stumped on urban medium. That's kind of the more harder part. So we sort of -- this is for everyone across the city, but it kind of gets into the meat of what we talk about, about setbacks, height, all those things, just to let people kind of think about it, answer some questions. So the surveys, the QR code, that's the survey, but if you go to OKC.gov codeupdate, you'll see the open houses. There's also, July 9th would be the next one, Bell Isle at -- I think that's also -- I can't remember that. They're either 10 to 12 or 2 to 4. I can't remember which one that one is, but... So we'll be doing them all the way through October 22nd, so come by and check it out.
This was actually the thing that I was trying to remember that I wanted to talk about. For those of you who've not ever been to these kind of things, it is so helpful. You can just go. You can just listen. You don't have to participate or, you know, get recognized or stand up or, you know, put your makeup on or anything. You can just go. And it is so interesting just to hear regular people's comments about what's on their mind, what's important to them, and, you know, when you're going through a huge process like this, I can tell you many of these kind of meetings I went to during the planning, the plan update and all of that. It is so helpful. You just have a bank of information that just really informs your decisions about things as you're moving forward. And so I plan to attend as many of these as I can. I missed the first one, but I would really encourage you, just, you know, drop in, stay I missed the first one, but I would really encourage you, just, you know, drop in, stay for a few minutes, look around, engage with people, you know, or not, as you wish, and I think you'll find them really, really helpful.
Yeah. We had about -- we had one on June 4th at the Northwest 122nd Library. We had about 40 people come, so that was exciting, and really, we're -- one of the main things they learn when they come is about the LUTAs. What is that? And also, like, place a dot on the map, because, you know, okay, they see the whole map, but actually, which one am I in? So they'll remember which one they're in, so, yes, it's fun.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. Yeah.
Do we have a timeline right now of when the code will be ready, or?
Yeah, so 2026.
Great. So a lifetime from now.
Yeah, it's a lifetime commitment for you all.
By the time your children are in high school.
Yeah, we hoped to have the sign code as a feather in our cap by now, and just -- but that'll be coming this summer.
2030 is going to be a banner year, though. Development's going to be smooth.
Yeah, we're working on the base zoning districts right now, so drafting those, and as we are hearing from people. So there's a lot going on right now, which is exciting. So the survey that Marilyn talked about, and all of the workshops that we'll be having. So we have the structure of the code, and based on what people say, we'll be able to kind of craft the details, you know, how important are, you know, various setbacks in kind of established neighborhoods to people. We'll be able to adjust the code based on their responses and kind of what we hear, and focus groups and so forth. So, yes, we do have rough drafts that are -- a lot of the numbers in there, a lot of the text is kind of work in progress and placeholders, and it'll get firmer and firmer as we go on. I think it's fair to say that later this year in the fall, we hope to get some actual drafts, some components of it, to the Stakeholder Advisory Team, to our committee, and it'll be a little tricky, because it'll be parts of the code, and so you'll -- but we feel like that's a little more digestible, give it to the committee and to the stakeholders in bite-sized pieces, even though you may not know another part, like, well, I know setbacks, but I don't know this other piece that's also important to how a site lays out, or how, whether it's appropriate or not. So, but, you know, you got to split it up somehow, so that's our intent. So this fall, we don't yet know how much we'll have ready, but we will have some things ready to move forward, so.
Okay. Great. Development Services, Municipal Counselor. How was your civics lesson, girls? We learned how parts of the city work, didn't we, Kinley and Logan? Welcome to summer. All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Was that their summer homework assignment?
Pretty much.
At the Cravens household?
Hey, listen, when I was 11 years old, I sat on that side when the horse she was over there and watched my granddad so we could go to the lake. So I think they can sit here one time and --
I don't know where they're going after this.
Nowhere. Home.
I think they're owed a trip.
Scoop poop? I don't know. You got a backyard dog?
Ice cream, at least.
Ice cream.
I think, can we make a motion for that?
That's fine.
That the Cravens children be given ice cream?
You put it up for vote, I'm going to vote no, just so it's on the record.
Yep. Let's do that. I make that motion. I also move we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I'll take that motion. If there's any opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.